That somebody is going to address the council, then they're restricted to three minutes so that we can't agendize that, and the public will know about it and can come to this chamber and be heard. So my apologies for those individuals who have been told untruthfully that we restrict speakers to three minutes on these agendized items. We do not, we have not, we will not, we give individuals adequate time to make their points. The Planning Commission and the City Council, as members of the audience, we know that this is going to be rather intense. We don't want to interrupt anybody when they're making their presentations. There are restroom facilities outside for the members of the public that are here. Planning and Council may get up and leave rather than bring the meeting to a halt. We want to stop and start over again, so if somebody needs to get a drink or use our facilities, please do so, but we are going to try to continue. We have found if we take a break and stop, when we start again, it's kind of lost, so we'd like to keep this continuum going as best we can. We request your cooperation in doing that. The first item on our agenda is written communications, discussion, and possible direction of the following items: Crime and Density. And Doug Robertson, are you going to give the presentation on this?
Actually, no. Our police chief is going to give the presentation, but I do not see him.
I didn't see him. I wondered about that. We normally meet at 6:00. Did he get the word that this is a 5:00 meeting?
I will step out and double-check on that. You may want to skip to item number two at this point, just to keep the meeting moving along. I'll step out and check on him.
Thank you, City Manager Robertson. Item number two, Design Guidelines and Lot Sizes. And who's going to give that presentation? You come forward, give your name, your position with the staff, and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and Planning Commissioners. My name is Scott Webb. I'm Senior Planner with the City of Victorville. What I wanted to do is start off by just recapping what the proposal is that staff is proposing, and then giving a couple of some data and progress report basically on the BIA's proposal and where we're at currently.
Just a second. Are you going to speak on the BIA's middle?
I'm just going to basically give an overview, and I believe the BIA is here tonight as well.
Well, they're going to be making a complete presentation, plus they have submitted information, plus we have information that was submitted two minutes before the hearing started. Maybe staff has received this. I know some of the council members have not. If I could ask you to give an overview, make it brief, and then after the presentations have been made by the speakers, then I'll ask staff to come up. Not a rebuttal, but a clarification, because I know we have a lot of questions. Is that okay?
Okay. That sounds great. All right, to start with, in general, the proposal will increase minimum lot sizes for single-family developments. This would affect the R1 zoning district, moving it from a 7,200 minimum square lot size to 10,000. That's a difference of 2,800 square feet. There's some misconceptions of how large that number is, but it's not anywhere close to the next tier of single-family that's within the City of Victorville, which is a half-acre. Those range around 18,000 square feet. So just to put that in perspective, we're talking about 10,000 square feet, which is just 2,800 square feet above our current standard. The proposal also identifies our existing specific plans and plan unit developments, and creates a baseline standard of a minimum lot size for a single-family parcel, which is 7,200 square feet within those planned developments. Also, as a part of this proposal, we will be presenting the single-family design guidelines, which we talked about, and those also include development standards that go along with the 10,000-square-foot lot size. So we're looking at larger setbacks for those larger parcels. There's been some requests, I believe that we stated in our prior meeting, that there is a wide range of lot sizes that other communities enjoy, and what we did is we took a survey, this is of 35 cities. Is this presenting on your screen in front of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
What we did is, the Xs on this spreadsheet indicate a city that has established a minimum lot-size zone. So starting with Victorville and the high-desert cities at the top, you can see Victorville, we have a 7,200-square-foot zone, and that's industry standard. So you could see as it goes down the spreadsheet that a lot of the cities enjoy that size lot size. And then for Victorville and the other high-desert cities, there's actually nothing, excluding Barstow, there's actually nothing in between a 7,200-square-foot zone and a half-acre. So also, you can see in this chart that it actually draws a line down the 10,000-square-foot lot sizes when we took the survey of other cities. So it is a fairly common size for a lot and a variety that staff is proposing. What we wanted to do is show you how this would affect our single-family proportions within the city, and currently, our 7,200, or R1 district takes up 59% of our land value, our land allocation, and what the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size would affect is about, it would reduce that basically in half. As you can see in the proposed pie chart, it's more dispersed, there's more variety which staff is proposing. I wanted to go through and just give you a snapshot of what and who is affected if this proposal would go forward. As we increase to a 10,000-square-foot lot size, there's certain parcels that legally we can't affect, and so what I want to do is go through who's affected and who's not affected. Our vacant R1 land that does not have tentative map approval, which accounts for 4.4 square miles, that's part of this proposal currently. Also, vacant R1 land that has tentative map approvals. So those tentative map approvals are split into two separate filings of maps. You have the non-vested maps and the vesting maps.
Could you explain the difference, please?
Yes. A vesting map, when a developer comes into the city, they can apply for a vesting map or they can apply for a non-vesting. If they apply for the vesting, it locks them into the development standards that are currently in place when the application is deemed complete. So as that tentative map gets recorded and builds, they can build to the standards that were in place when they filed the application. Now, there's some time limits to that. It only affects them, they're only grandfathered for a year after the map records. So if the permits are not obtained for that track map after a year after its recordation, then the city could impose new standards that they put in place after their application was filed.
Is that a state standard or is that a City of Victorville standard?
It is a state standard through the Subdivision Map Act. So currently, the vesting maps, we have roughly about 4,000 of those lots currently, and they have the right to record, and they have the right to build under the current standards when they file the application, up to a year. The non-vesting maps, these make up the majority of them, there's roughly about 10,000 of those that are active currently. Those also have the right to record, and if they choose to record their map, though, they would be subject to the new R1 10,000 standards, so they'd have to build to the wider setbacks. But they legally have the right to record that map as long as they don't let it expire.
Scott, are those 10,000 maps or 10,000 lots?
I'm sorry, those are 10,000 lots.
Lots, covered by non-vesting tentative map.
That are non-vesting, correct. Now, who's not affected by this proposal? It's the recorded maps, I'm sorry, yeah, the recorded maps and recorded lots. There's about 3,800 of those in the city currently. About 65% of them have street improvements in, they have lights graded, curb cuts. So legally, from our research, we can't increase the lot size at that point because it's already a recorded map. They could essentially sell it off to individual buyers at that point. Also, develop single-family tracks, same thing, it's a recorded map, it wouldn't be affected by this zone change. And also vacant districts that have minimum lot sizes over 10,000. So there are some scattered single-family lots that we haven't built on currently, but they're in a district that's designated for half-acre or acre lots. Just to go over some misconceptions, I know the lot size, the perception of 10,000 square feet is ranging to some people, and I just want to clarify, it is only 2,800 square feet above the current standard. There's the misconception that it voids the tentative map, and that's not the case. All of the developers that have an active map, they have the ability to record it within the timeframes that are currently specified. There is an expiration date that's associated with those. I know the state legislature has been extending those, but at some point, if they do, if it does get to a point where it expires, when they come back in or ask for an extension from the city, that's when the city could impose the new lot-size standard. Obviously, it doesn't affect recorded maps. And then there's a misconception that this action would stall the economy. And what I wanted to clarify is, we do have 3,800 lots within the city that are recorded that are close to ready to be built on, and just to put that in perspective, Spring Valley Lake has around 4,200 lots within their community. So we have an abundance of lots within the city that are recorded and virtually ready to build on. Lastly, it's been thrown around loosely that this constitutes a taking. Obviously, the city is not occupying any property. We're not, this shouldn't be construed as a regulatory taking by any means. The city has the police power to put these standards in place. So we've been working with the city attorney and consulting with them along the way, so I just wanted to clarify that, and I believe that was my last slide. I'll go over this once the BIA has a chance to discuss.
Thank you.
But I'm here if you have any questions.
I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. I'd ask that the Planning Commission, the council members hold that. They may be answered with further presentations.
All right, thank you.
Name for the record, please.
Good evening. Chris Borcher, Acting Director of Development.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd like to pose one question. Why would we have all of these maps proposed and recorded, and nothing's happening? Why would we have that?
You have a ton of developers here who could answer that question for you. It could be any number of reasons. They began the project late, the downturn happened, and they found it not able to continue the process. Yeah, it could be anywhere, any range of reasons. I'd also like to add, this is kind of uncharted territory because our last boom in the late 80s, early 90s, there wasn't these state legislative acts that automatically extended the maps. So when we rolled into the next boom, it was a fresh start, so to speak. So when we have these maps that are still active, it's because of the state legislature that has automatically extended these maps. Typically, they're only approved for a three-year period, and then they have that, in that three-year period, they need to record the map. So what the state legislature has done is, over seven years, they've extended these maps. Why? I think you could maybe ask the building industry, it's, you know, they may consult with our legislature to pass these things. They believe that there's been a lot of investment so far, it shouldn't go to waste.
Bless you. Do we have any other questions? Go ahead, Chris.
Yes, I apologize for not making the meeting last week, but I did listen to it yesterday when I got back, and was pleased to hear, there was some discussion about commercial land uses and their impact on safety of the community. I'd like to expand on that a little bit with commercial land use restrictions and some of the other things that you might want to consider in terms of providing for higher-value residential. While it doesn't impact the home itself, what you need to think about is, when somebody's looking to move to the city in the future, what is, and I've heard the mayor say, what is the image of the city? What are we projecting to potential residents who might want to live here? And by looking at our land uses, and also, not just the bars and the nightclubs and the pawn shops and the liquor stores that impact the safety as well, they also impact the image of the city in attracting new residents. And I would like to propose, and I heard some discussion in there last week about massage parlors and internet cafes, and maybe we should even look at smoke shops, tattoo parlors, check cashing, we already have some restrictions on. But it was just to throw out the idea of that those are concerns, they do impact the image of the city and our future residents. I don't know if you're familiar, but massage is a huge ordeal happening in many cities across California right now because the legislature.
You gotta turn it around so the audience can see what you're saying.
Oh, okay, sure. What the state did was stepped in and said that we're going to regulate massage, and we're going to license massage technicians, and that when they did that, the city, we changed our ordinance to say, okay, you have to comply with the state, and you're allowed to go in. Well, what we're finding is that they give just about licenses to anybody, and these are no more than fronts for prostitution and sexual services that are being provided in these things. So we would like to come forward to you in the future with discussions and possible moratoriums on these type of uses, and prohibitions, just outlawing them outright in the zoning code and the land use table in order to better help the city and the image that we project in the future. Moving on to the next slide, actually, this was, there was discussion, I may need Scott to come up and help, but you had some discussion about alcohol last time with the findings of public convenience that were a necessity. That discussion was done, and the map was revised to show you this. This has broken it down by gas stations, over 10,000-square-foot alcohol retailers, and then also those under, are the ones with the crosshairs in them. So it gives you a better idea of where those locations were at. I believe that was requested at the last meeting. So that information is on that map. It does show a lot of small, you see the number on the left, is 32 locations are the highest of just liquor stores, so the under 10,000, the strip mall, the, you know, the individual small liquor store user. That is provided for you there. It talks about our existing ordinances, that we conditionally, conditional use permits are required for bars and nightclubs right now in commercial zones. On-sale restaurants are permitted, they can go in with a business license, and then off-sale retailers, if they're within 300 feet of a residence, they do require a conditional use permit then. You don't have any other questions on that? I can move on to, would be the proactive residential code enforcement, which is item number four.
Chris, let me stop you. Let me stop you, Chris. We're actually going to take them one by one.
Oh, okay.
So just hold off at this point.
Oh, okay.
Let's finish with the residential, the lot size and code change options for item number two, then we'll go back to item number one, the police chief's here.
Sorry.
Then we'll get to three, four, and five.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You missed last week, that's kind of how we set it up, worked pretty well, so that if somebody wanted to comment on an item specific, they could pull it out, so.
Now, there will be more explanation probably from Chris Borcher and Scott, but any questions from Planning Commissioners or Council? Of them, I see not. Chief, before we get to you, I have, on item number two, I have three cards, individuals have requested to speak. First one, Joanne Allman. Did you want to speak on item number two, Design Guidelines and Lot Sizes?
Joanne Allman, City of Victorville. Many years ago, I started the Golden Triangle Ad-Hire Committee and fought for four and a half years with my own money, my husband and my money, to become part of the City of Victorville. In its area was Sunset Ridge and Eagle Ranch, no, Eagle Ranch, Bear Valley Ranch. Those were half-acre and acre homes. They've been there for quite a while. I know they were built by the county, but when we became part of the City of Victorville, that is the part of Victorville now, and those are large lots. Eagle Ranch also has half acres. Those are pretty nice, but I wish we could have a picture of the back homes that are in the Golden Triangle. And I think all of you know where the Golden Triangle is, what the boundaries are. I think you've also forgotten where we are. If we, this was kind of on the back burner, and try and give incentives to businesses to fill in the empty big boxes and fix some of our streets. Bear Valley is one big pothole. So I think the size of our homes, my husband and I live in, I forgot where we live, in a 7,200-square-foot lot. We had a 150-pound dog and raised a granddaughter, and everybody there was happy. We do have two and a half acres on Bear Valley Road that's commercial. We lived behind there on two and a half acres, and it was awful hard for us to keep neat and clean. I have relatives that live in Apple Valley. They have a big lot. The homes in the front are beautiful, they keep their front yards very nice, but you go along the side and look in the backyards, they have the ATVs, the motorhomes, and weeds. So when people work down the hill and have to come up and take care of their yards and that, but they also have children to take care of and have dinner, I feel bad saying these things because I sat up there for 16 years, and I love this city, but things are changing, and I think the big lots are not for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, Dorothy Miller. It specifically says item two, that's why I'm calling you now.
One side of two and the other side two, right there, all together. I want to be sure you've seen it this time, because you missed things last time.
My apologies.
This is, I'm glad to see all of you here, and I'd really appreciate if I could have got a couple people to come out there and look at what we have. We have half acres, we got one-acre lots, and I contacted a couple people to come over, and I asked them to come and see what we have. We have a car lot that is full of smashed-up cars, and, I mean, this is in the backyard, so you're building bigger lots for more garbage. People don't work here, this is the bedroom city. People work down the hill. They don't have time to take care of all this stuff. I mean, they're too busy getting down the hill, doing their job, coming back, taking care of the kids. What time do you have? You don't. And this is one of the major things that we have here in this city. We have roads that are just really needing repair. I mean, Bear Valley Road is really, really out of control. But we don't have money to do that, but we have money to put other places in this city, depends on who lives there. This is not right. You guys are not paying attention to the people. It's really beginning to eat me up to no end. I do not appreciate what's going on, changing lot sizes to make bigger messes for us, and code enforcement can't do everything because we don't have enough people anymore. We have gotten rid of all of our help, we cut way back, and nobody's doing nothing. And it's sad. It's really sad. We have been here in the city for quite some time. My mother and father was in his fear, which I wish I was in now, because they have all kinds of businesses going on, they've got all kinds of things going on there. We have nothing. Our box stores, Target, nothing going on. Something is definitely wrong. We need to get the city going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. The other card that I have, Carlos Rodriguez, but before I call on you. Doug Robertson, I understand that there had been three presentations requested, or maybe two. Are those to be made under item number two? I don't see where this is on the agenda for those items, other than public comments, but it's not public comments because my understanding was that this had specifically called for individuals to talk, so based upon that card, on item number two, was it the intent of staff that they would then speak for the presentation?
Yes. Yes, I talked with Mr. Rodriguez.
Dr. John Husing then would also come under item number two?
Yes.
Okay. Those are going to be lengthy, so before I proceed with those, we cut the, the police chief was a little late, we'll go back to number one, our report from our police chief, Sam LaChia, and then we'll go back and start that process. Dr. Husing and Carlos Rodriguez will be right back to you. Sam, if you could come up, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, City Planning Commission. I brought these, I don't think that I'll need them, because I've got something on the computer that basically shows the same thing. But just in case, I brought the hard copies, in case we need to look at them, in case the computer doesn't work. First of all, I apologize, I remember clearly the discussion you had last week, where you talked about 5:00, but I was fat, dumb, and happy sitting in my office when Doug called me and said, "Did you forget something?" So I apologize. What I'm about to show you, Brandon, if you could show the first slide. This, what is coming up on the screen is a picture of the city and our sphere of influence. Oh goodness, it's going to be real tough to see that picture, but maybe I can explain it as best I can. What you see are the 75 reporting districts for the City of Victorville, and if you remember last time, I said that those 75 reporting districts are broken down into eight beat patterns. All you see here tonight are the 75 reporting districts, and they're colorized, and you can't see the legend, but what the legend describes down there in the bottom right-hand corner is the density of dispatched calls for service in the city from January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2013. So you've got a year's worth of data there. The areas denoted in red are the areas where we spent most of our time responding to calls for service. You see, there's approximately one, two, three, four, maybe five reporting districts that show the highest density of calls for service. Now, if you go to slide two, Brandon, what we've done is, we've taken that exact map and we've overlaid the population estimates that were provided to me by the City of Victorville, and we were looking for a correlation of where we spend the most time on our dispatched calls for service in relation to the highest density of population. And if you'll notice, the map didn't change much in color. Those red-denoted reporting districts where we spent the most time responding to calls for service are also the areas where we have the most population. I cannot stand here before you and say that high density causes crime, but what I can tell you is, is that where we are the most populated, we respond to the most regarding calls for service. Calls for service could include anything. It could include somebody who's complaining about somebody riding a bicycle past their house, and we get a dispatch call for service. So, Brandon, if you can take me to the third slide. The third slide is also a map of the city. Now, this map breaks the information down even further, and it denotes where the deputies actually pulled a DR, which stands for Deputy Report, and conducted a criminal report based on our response. So again, not every call for service results in a deputy report, and what this map shows is the density of our deputy reports in the same time period that we looked at for calls for service. And if you see, the highest density of deputy reports And if you see, the highest density of deputy reports is very similar to the density map that, on our calls for service, except for one, and I believe that's... The only change we saw was in VC 68, the reporting district at the bottom left-hand side. That went from red to orange. So even though we responded to a good number of calls in that, in that reporting district, we didn't necessarily take that many reports in that reporting district. Does that make sense to everybody? If you go to the last slide, Brandon, the last slide, or slide number four, is, again, it's the density of deputy reports taken, and then we overlaid the population estimates provided by the city on top of that to show you that the colors of the map don't change that much. So what I can say is more population in those reporting districts results in a higher number of calls for service, which in turn results in a higher number of deputy reports taken.
Sam, those blue marks, the little, you said those represent the 75 reporting districts?
I'm sorry, the blue marks?
Aren't they blue?
No. You'll see, you'll see on, if you can see it on your screen, you'll see a section of the city denoted by a VC number. And that VC number is numbered on that map. You'll find number one through number 75, and those are the reporting districts for the city. Now those areas of space are not equal. For example, VC 13 is the Mall of Victor Valley. We gave the Mall of Victor Valley its own reporting district so that we could accurately sift through data that had to do with just the mall. So every VC number is a reporting district, and there should be 75 of those.
I'm a little colorblind. They're not blue marks. They're blue letters or something. They're letters. Those are the reporting districts.
Yes, sir.
Why are they so concentrated in the north, yeah, the northeast?
I don't have an answer for you there.
The significance of those concentrations?
The reporting district is a, it's computer language, and it tells the computer in the car that the deputy is driving what calls they're going to be assigned automatically by the computer. As far as the size, I don't know the rationale behind how they were designed. So I can't, I can't answer why some are smaller than others. But as you move farther out of the downtown area of the city, or where the city began, when these reporting districts were created, it was much more sparsely populated, and so the reporting districts grew because there wasn't enough activity.
So the reporting districts bear no relationship to where the calls are?
Correct. Correct. I guess I should have just said that. Other questions?
Questions and comments?
And I'll leave these on display up here for anyone to look at. I know it's difficult to see them.
When I get some time, I would like to look at it to have a better understanding of exactly what it shows. Sure, most of us will want to do that. So, Sam, thank you for your presentation. Now, under item number two, Carlos Rodriguez is the, from the Baldi Mesa Building Industry Association, and I understand you have a presentation to make, Mr. Rodriguez, if you would come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the planning commission. Really appreciate scheduling this workshop. Want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address you all this evening. Really, our goal has been twofold. We understand that there's significant challenges, as highlighted in your January strategy session, and you've laid out some ambitious goals. We want to be a part of that solution. We understand the challenges facing the city of Victorville, and what we wanted to do is bring information and, and bring solutions and alternatives to the table to work with you to help meet, meet the goals that you've, you've set out before you. So during my last remarks, I had mentioned that we needed to look at this, and we urged the council and the planning commission to look at this holistically so that an informed decision can be made. And so one of the, one of the topics that really had not been addressed, it wasn't addressed in the staff presentation, at least not yet, it was highlighted as a misconception regarding the economic implications of the proposal, the downzoning proposal. Now, I'm not an economist, but I think we all know a renowned economist. We've all probably seen Dr. John Husing in numerous settings. He recently addressed probably over 400 attendees at the Inland Empire Economic Partnership Conference, and I understand there's been some recent discussions among High Desert Leadership with Dr. Husing, which is encouraging because it demonstrates that there is clearly the concern about what, what the cities in the Victor Valley and the High Desert need to do to get the economy going. So we, we commissioned Dr. Husing to answer a question, and that is, what are the economic implications of the downzoning proposal? And so while it says that it's a misconception, we wanted to clarify that so that there is no doubt, and there would be an opportunity. We really are thankful, very thankful, that we can have this dialogue and the opportunity for you on, on the city council and in the planning commission to be able to have a back-and-forth discussion with Dr. Husing. So that, again, whatever the ultimate decision is made by, by the, by the city council, we want to make sure that it's eyes wide open, and, and the economic implications are very clear. Secondly, we have been, from the very get-go, adamant about, we do not need to change 10,000-square-foot, go to 10,000-square-foot lots to address the concerns, whether they be crime, which would be interested in knowing regarding the presentation that was just prepared, what the per capita, the per capita statistics would, would play out relative to the total population in Victorville relative to other cities. So what would be the, the crime rate per capita, I think, just highlighting that increased population would be more calls. I, I don't think that anyone is really surprised by that, that variable, but I think if we had a closer look on the per capita, and we do have some information to share in the near future on that front, but not tonight. Also, income levels as a variable of crime, education levels as a variable of crime, age, unemployment levels, those are all variables that also should be looked at and examined closely when, and not simply looking at lot size and, and immediately jumping to the conclusion that it's going to increase crime. So from a solution standpoint, I want to thank Doug Robertson, Chris Portchert, Scott Webb for meeting with us for over an hour. We had a, I thought, a productive discussion to talk about our design standards that we submitted to you on April 15. We wanted to, again, provide alternatives to say, we can raise the bar. We want better aesthetics. We can do that. We're up for the challenge as an industry to do that. But there's one thing that I need to say emphatically. This presentation that we're going to have tonight about the design standards we're proposing shouldn't be the final destination. I, in my last comments, Mr. Mayor and council members and planning commission urged you all to consider a coordinated tour of communities so that you can see actual, the recommendations that we have in, in living color. That's something that the city of Hesperia recently did, not coordinating with BIA, but they took, they went out and had a public hearing and noticed it, and spent four hours touring communities down the hill. We would urge whatever decision is made ultimately not be made without that important step. So with that, we want to kick off our presentations. Do appreciate the time, again. First up is from our design standards recommendation submitted to you respectfully on the 15th. We have two of my colleagues, Adam Collier with Lewis Operating Companies and Kevin Canning with KB Home. I don't think you would find a better representation of excellence in our industry. And so to have that level of expertise before you this evening, I think, is a great opportunity, and I appreciate the time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collier and Mr. Canning. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos, Mr. Mayor, council members, commissioners. I'm Kevin Canning, representing KB Home. And spend a lot, said, I will, Adam and I will get through this as succinctly as possible out of respect for your time. Let's see how this works. Okay. This is just a brief outline of what Adam and I intend to cover this evening, a recap of what we understand your proposal to be, and then, without repeating it, you can see what those things are. Scott Webb has already covered an overview of the proposal. This is our synopsis, our understanding of it, to increase the minimum lot size across the entire R1 zoning district, to amend undeveloped plan unit development and specific plans, to also respect this new minimum lot size. But also, and more importantly, to amend the development standards. So a 7,200-square-foot lot that exists today, or could exist today, that I'll discuss in a second, would be subject to new development standards that are inappropriate for a lot of that size. And then finally, to adopt design guidelines. This is the key that we've looked at for the design guidelines in the BIA response. It is our belief that there is nothing inherently better about a 10,000-square-foot lot to address the issues that we've heard the, the city is concerned about, and that comprehensive design guidelines and creative solutions are much more appropriate to address these problems, and we would like to focus on that. To do a blanket increase of minimum lot sizes, when you have a substantial inventory of 7,200-square-foot lots, creates a lot of implementation challenges. You will have inconsistent development within existing neighborhoods, plan unit development and specific plans that rely on a mixture of lot sizes, uses, amenities. The economics could be significantly impacted and negatively impacted. Proposed guidelines, as were proposed by staff, contain standards, and we would like to suggest that there should be more flexibility and more goal-oriented statements that allow a two-way street between a proposed developer and staff, council members, commissioner, to achieve the ultimate goal that you desire. And we see nothing in the, in the proposed development standards that address many of the issues you've identified. It merely makes bigger lots, creates bigger spaces. We suggest that enhancing a street scene, public interaction, making more attractive neighborhoods is a better way to go, and we can do that, and we'd like to help you get there. This is an example. Scott had mentioned that there's roughly 10,000 lots out there now that are 7,200 minimum square-foot lots on approved tentative maps. These lots, these maps could record, and you would have 10,000 7,200-square-foot lots that, if this proposal were to go through unamended, would be required to develop under development standards setbacks that are more appropriate to a 10,000-square-foot lot. On the left, you have, or you have two 7,200-square-foot lots, 60 by 120. On the left is the, is the building envelope created by front, rear, and side setbacks under the existing standards. It creates that envelope. We're not saying that's how big the house would be, but that's what you're starting with as a builder to look, where to put the home in there. Doing that same lot under the new 10,000-square-foot setbacks, you can see how the building envelope narrows, and still putting a 400-square-foot garage in there, a standard two-car garage, it almost, you know, begs the result that the garage will continue to dominate. Yes, there are design solutions to address this, but increasing the setbacks on these smaller lots is, we suggest, is not the way to go there. And we would like to continue to work with your staff to create development standards that address development on 7,200-square-foot lots to achieve your results. This would be done, basically, as I said, through the design guidelines, allowing flexibility. It is our experience that you cannot legislate good taste, if you will. The guidelines need to be flexible. There needs to be give and take to achieve an overall goal and to let the creative juices of the development industry attack the problem to suggest development solutions for the city. A few examples is that there are specific pictures within the styles, within the development standards, and yet those pictures don't really correlate to what the city is achieving. It talks about porches and things that aren't really in those, those pictures. And architectural styles are misleading and sometimes contingent and part and parcel of the scale of the architecture to be used. So it's, it is somewhat misleading in our example, in our experience. We would like to, again, drive these design guidelines to specifically address the city's goals and cleaning up the issues you're concerned about. A simple lot increase, we do not feel achieves that. As an example, this is just, just one example to give you the kind of flex, to give you an indication of the kind of flexibility. In discussions with staff, there was concern about the placement of adequate space for the placement of RVs on properties. Well, inherently, it's tough to squeeze that into a 7,200-square-foot lot. But with development flexibility, we're certain we could achieve some sort of percentage of lots within any, any given subdivision, could accommodate the RV parking on the side and the rear within the prescribed setbacks, what have you. Again, I don't know, and even, this may or may not be a hot button for the council. It's just an example of how we need to be flexible to address each of those designs. And simply increasing lot sizes, increasing setbacks, we feel do not address these issues. We would like to work with you on examples from our experience that we think will get you to that, that destination. And I'm going to turn it over to Adam for some case examples.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, planning commission. I'm going to go over a few examples.
What's your name again?
Adam Collier with Lewis Operating Corp. I'm going to go over a few examples of some projects just down the hill from you guys in Ranch at Kukumunga, Ontario, Chino. I've worked as a planner for over six different cities, both as staff and as a consultant. So a lot of what I'm bringing to you tonight, some of my observations from some of the projects that I've worked with personally to lead into that. The Victoria Arbor's Master Plan is a project that is located just north of Victoria Gardens. I'm sure you all are very familiar with Victoria Gardens. This project, these lot sizes have required minimum 5,000-square-foot lot. And if you look at the architecture shown in these different images, and if you look at the actual design guideline language in the master plan, it's very specific, requires a lot of unique elements, a lot of high-quality design. And the key thing is, for these, for these 5,000-square-foot lots, you're still achieving resale values, 550 to 625. So it shows that the value of a 5,000-square-foot lot is still very significant. And when you compare that to what we call the, the Etowah and North Specific Plan in the city of Ranch at Kukumunga, this is located on Day Creek Boulevard, just north of the 210 freeway. And to kind of back up to staff, showed you guys a table earlier tonight that shows what cities have a different range of lot sizes, you know, as minimums. And one thing to point out is a lot of cities, while they may have a 7,200-square-foot lot minimum, what was not identified is a lot of those cities actually have a minimum net average that is higher than that lot size. So you may be allowed to build a minimum 7,200-square-foot lot. However, throughout your projects, you may actually have to be at a minimum 10,000, or 8,000, or 9,000. So you actually have to provide a higher range of lot sizes than just 7,200 square feet. So I think it's important to note that while that table shows kind of a broad cross-section of what those minimums are, most cities actually have an average qualifier in there. So that's something to consider. Ranch at Etowah Estates or the Etowah North Specific Plan, these are all 7,200-square-foot lots, but it has that 10,000... high, a lot of them are view lots, and they have great views over the Chino Valley, they benefit from that, but you can see it's not that different from a 5,000 square foot lot. Now, heading down to Eatingland, which is in Ontario, just off of Riverside Drive, that project initially started, I believe, in 2004, 2005. It has a wide variety of lot sizes. Some is small, has 2,000 square feet to more of an attached product that you can see here. So again, you can kind of see the resale values that you gain from those smaller lots. It's still significant considering the size and the quality of that product in a small space.
Where are the garages on those houses, and how do you get to them?
Yeah, so the garages on the, the top image, those are a cluster product. So the garages are in an alleyway off the back. And the, for the product on the bottom image, same thing. It's also a cluster product with alleys off the back. But they're all two-car garages per unit. And then heading down to the preserve, which is our Lewis specific plan down in Chino, we have a wide variety of lot sizes there as well that range from 6,000 to 5,000, to even smaller cluster products. And as you can see from these images, the top picture is an example of some of our cluster products that take access off a private alley off the back. And the product below is actually a 5,000 square foot minimum lot in the preserve as well. And you can see the, the resale values. This is in Chino. You know, mind you, they don't have the, the view benefits that, you know, Rancho Cucamonga does. But you can see the resale values are extremely high for those small lots. So I think off the face, to assume that a higher lot will automatically gain a higher value is somewhat false. We're kind of leading into an example of a project that Lewis has worked on here in the city of Victorville. This is our park view specific plan. This depicts our land use plan that was approved, our specific plan, has a range of lot sizes from 5,000 to 6,000, as well as a cluster product. As you can go into, these are actual images from the design guidelines that were adopted in our specific plan. As you can tell, there's a high degree of designed elements that are required for each product as far as garage elements, setbacks, separation from units, garages being located further away from the street. These are all the elements that the city is looking for, and yet this is a specific plan that was adopted by the city almost five, six years ago. From my experience of working as a consultant and as a planner for a lot of cities, I had a chance to kind of review your general plan and look at some of the elements that, you know, as the city started to pick up growth again, what are some of the things you are looking for to make this community more of a, more livable, more aesthetically beneficial to those living here? It starts with the general plan. And I had a chance to look at your circulation element. And while it's a great start for this community, if you look at what a lot of cities are doing with their circulation elements, is it's actually become a mobility plan. It's not just how do we move vehicular traffic around the city? Rancho Cucamonga recently adopted a very, a new general plan, and that circulation element was adopted as a mobility element. It addresses pedestrians, addresses bicycles, addresses vehicles. How do we get people to move about the city other than just traffic? And I think, you know, that's a lot of the concerns about this, that staff and some of the council members have aired, is there's a lot of traffic issues. How can we address some of these issues by trying to encourage, you know, more pedestrian and more bicycle traffic? Another thing to look and consider, does the city have a park and recreation master plan? I looked online, the city has a master plan that identifies parks that they currently have. But what is the city looking at long-term? Are they looking at the specific plans that have been approved? What are the funding mechanisms for future park areas to serve this community? And then finally, does the city have a trails master plan? Is the city looking at how do we get people to get out, move around the community? If it is a bedroom community, if people are driving on the weekends, you want to get them out. How do you get them out? Where do they go? Do they have to get in their car and drive 30 miles to go to the park? And that's one of the elements of a trails master plan is, how do we get people out of their cars and moving about their community? So again, Carlos already touched on this. One of the things we really want to encourage, let's set up a tour. I've done this with other staff, other cities before as well. There's some great products we can all look at just down the hill in Rancho, Fontana, Ontario, Chino, that I've already touched on. I think it'd be very beneficial for everyone to see what does a 5,000 square foot lot like, look like? What does a 7,200 square foot lot look like? You know, I live in a 10,000 square foot lot in Upland, and then I compare the differences between all those different lot sizes. And it's very interesting to kind of see what are the benefits of Etowah. And that's something I think you all need to be kind of informed on, what those look like today. And then finally, I just encourage staff to continue to meet with us, to go over our development standards. And I think it might be beneficial, as this economy in the high desert is starting to pick up, that the BIA and other developers kind of join up with city, with the city staff, to meet quarterly, to kind of talk about what challenges you guys are having as the market's picking up. And finally, the BIA and builders, we want to bring quality development to the city. It's important to us, because obviously, we need quality projects, we need jobs, you need jobs. There are too many benefits that we cannot overlook to miss. And we personally believe that legislating minimum lot sizes will not solve, nor address the, the social challenges that this city faces. And we think that our proposal will bring a high-quality project to the city. Thank you. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. Planning commissioners or city council members, do you have any questions at this time? There are no questions at this time? Dr. Husing, are you going to give your presentation now? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the planning commission, my name is Dr. John Husing. I am an economist who has specialized in studying the inland empire economy since, believe it or not, 1964. So I now have half a century of watching how this area grows up. And what I want to do today is share with you several things about Victorville within the context of the inland empire region. First of all, some of the issues that I think are coming before you. Second of all, the role of housing in that, the issues coming from it. I want to look at two or three policy questions, and then finally, look at the issues of economic impact. To start out with, just looking at some of the economics and demographics of the city, I don't think any of, I'm surprising any of you by saying that you've had rapid population growth. You've added 88% to your population between 2000 and 2013. You will also notice on this graph that it has slowed down in the most recent years as we've gone through the Great Recession. Another fact about this city, which I found somewhat surprising when I did the data, is that overwhelmingly, your largest demographic group are children, zero to 19 years old. So that, and you can see there, compared to the inland empire, it's 37.7%, whereas the inland empire as a whole is 31.7. So it is substantially larger and the only group in the population that is much bigger than the region, just because of how much larger. One of the very great difficulties that the high desert has faced and the city faces economically is the educational level of folks who live here. If we look at the share of your adult population, 25 years and over, who stopped at high school or didn't get that far, it's 53.5% of your population, so over half. For an economist, when you're looking at what's going to cause the economy to be able to grow, having a population with educational difficulties is definitely a diff, an issue. Looking at it in the opposite way, at the share of the population who have bachelor's degrees or higher, it is only 12.2%. That is lower than virtually every county in Southern California, and substantially below even the high desert as a whole. When we look at the question of poverty, one of the issues that jumps out, if you look at this chart, first of all, you have the second lowest level of poverty in the high desert. 26.7% of adults are living below the poverty thresholds. When we look at children, it is 36%. So a significant share of the children are living in poverty in the region and the city. Again, the city is better off than the region, but those numbers are over 1 in 4 adults and over 1 in 3 children. When we look at the unemployment rates in the high desert, they are all quite high. The region as a whole, or the county as a whole, excuse me, is 9.3%. To put that in context, it is, would be the third highest in the United States for a region with a million or more people. First would be Providence, Rhode Island. Second would be the county of Riverside. Third is the county of San Bernardino. So we have an unemployment problem, but you will also notice it's more difficult here in the high desert, where in 2013, in December, which is what these data are, it were, excuse me, yeah, I'm sorry, the source is wrong. It should be the Employment Development Department. Those figures are abnormally high, being in double digits. When we look at the share of the public living on some form of public assistance, for the county as a whole, it's roughly 1 out of 4 residents. For the city, it's 39.4%. You can see that the Adelanto and Barstow, it is much higher. It is lower in the high desert cities as a whole, as well as in Hesperia and Apple Valley. A little bit of good news, since I'm very tired of being the most depressing person that anybody knows nowadays. If you look at what's happening to employment in the city, you will notice that it bottomed at 24,185 jobs in the city in 2010. It moved up a little bit in 2011, basically paused in 2012, accelerated in 2013. The 2014 number is my forecast of 30,000. And what this is based on is the forecast that the region as a whole is going to average an increase of 40,000, so about 3,000 of those coming into the city. This would be appropriate for what we see going forward. There was a huge increase in the region's employment last year of 46,833 jobs. This year, it looks like we're going to add another 40,000 with, you're jumping up to 30,000, which puts you pretty much back at '07, which was the peak. So it looks like we're getting there. Already in 2013, the payroll released by the companies in the city matched the high in '07. So the payroll has come back completely. Average pay per, per job within the city, 36,483 in 2013, was in fact a record. So that there are some very great difficulties, there is some good signs now coming out of the economy. When we look at retail sales, all of the cities of the inland empire took a tremendous hit with the Great Recession, with retail sales dropping dramatically on a total basis and on a per capita basis. You can see that since 2009, it has been coming back, and it's now back at a billion of, I believe it's 600, yeah, billion 671 million in 2013. So it is growing back fairly strongly last year. When we look at assessed valuation, we have data through 2013, it had barely moved from the low. However, there's been a substantial increase in residential prices in the city, and that should show up in the 2014 data, which comes in on July 1st. I have forecasted a 6.1% increase for the county. I do that work for them for their budget. And if that comes about, I would anticipate you'll move up to $7 billion next year. Now, the question that we're sitting here today, I would, looking at, is more about housing, but housing and the numbers we just looked at are not unrelated. So what is the housing data doing? First of all, existing home sales actually hit their record in '09. Unfortunately, that was largely driven by foreclosures. And so 2009 and 10 and 11, we had a heavy foreclosure influence. That has started to work its way out of the numbers. Part of the reason for the low number in 2013 was frankly, lack of supply as much as lack of demand. When we look at price, what we have seen is a major move. The bottom was in 2009 at about 115,000. The current number is that in first quarter of this year, so 2014, was 164,000. It is up 43% from the low. Good news if you're worried about your housing value, bad news if you're worried about your property taxes, I guess. Looking at the new home market, the new home market is essentially dormant. Why? Basically, because demand is really, starts out geographically, starts in the coastal counties, moves inland, and then as it moves inland, it spreads throughout the region. It has not yet really come in for the new home market here in the high desert as yet. New home prices from their low are up 26.9%. This is largely driven by costs. This is not so much driven by demand, but by just the fact materials are more expensive. Now, there are issues that have come to the high desert as a consequence of the housing market. Looking first of all, at the question of foreclosures, specifically at Victorville, 23,011 single-family homes, 8,127 were foreclosed on between '07 and 2012. So just under 40% of the houses in the city were foreclosed upon. That is a gigantic hit for any community to take. On the bottom half of this, what you're looking at is absentee-owned homes. You see the number of homes in each community, you see the absentee-owned, and you see the shares. In Victorville, it's 26.1. It's higher in Adelanto at 28.9, but every city is over 20%. So you have a substantial number of absentee homes that have been injected into all of the high desert communities. You see there, the shares of the absentee-owned. Now, I was interested in listening to the police chief. I've had the pleasure of working directly with Sheriff McMahon, and was given access to the addresses of every call for service in San Bernardino County by the sheriff's office. I also have, because of work I do with the assessor's office, what type of property each address is, whether it's a single-family home, or a condo, or an apartment, duplexes through fourplexes, on up through, including mobile homes. I also have data that was given to me in 2012 in working with Data Quick, which is the basic source economists look at, to find out, okay, of the single-family homes, which addresses were, did the, the tax bill not go to the property? Which generally means it's a rental, or it's a vacant, one or the other. Correlating all this together, the question that I had was, what is the higher probability, because it's higher in every case, of a call for police service in a detached, single-family owned home versus all of the other types? And you could see there, for condos, it's 13% higher probability. It's 16% higher in a single-family rented home, apartments, it's 37% higher. Two to fourplexes, the same. And in the mobile homes, it was very, very high. And again, these are correlating the data from those three sources. What it is saying there is that when you have the injection of large numbers of rentals into a community, it does have an effect on the quality of life in the community. It therefore was not a surprise to me to see that from 2010, when we were beginning to get the large injection of rentals, that you began to see the number of crimes per 1,000 people, which is the FBI way of, of measuring this, go from 37.6 up to 43.2. It is still down from historic highs, but it has moved in the wrong direction of late. So then there are a group of four policy questions that I took a look at. The first one was the pressures applied to the quality of life due to putting large number of single-family rental, rentals into neighborhoods that were never designed for that purpose. They were designed for owner occupancy. And you see here in the middle column, the density of population living in single-family rentals is much higher than the density in every case, with one exception, and that was Lucerne Valley. The other being Pinion Hills was very low difference there. But other than that, there is a much higher density in single-family rentals. And I would suggest this is a piece of the issue that's been coming about as opposed to what has occurred to the housing stock of late. When we, the second question I was asked, asking myself was, with the massive conversion from homeownership to rentals, is this unique, or is this going on historically? So I got data back to 1992. '92 is important because that was the last major downturn. '92 was when George Air Force Base closed, 92 to '94 period Norton Air Force Base closed. Southern California lost 500,000 jobs. But you will see that non-performing real estate assets in the country through the recession that was set off in the early 90s did not go up that dramatically. It's really this time around. This is a unique experience, largely caused frankly, by the mortgage industry, which frankly, was doing crazy things in terms of talking people into taking equity out of their houses for mortgages and getting into houses they had no business trying to buy. So you see that it is coming down. By 2013, these are national numbers, it was starting to get back to the '06 level. One of the issues that is affecting you dramatically is this chart. When a foreclosure occurs and a lending institution is going to get the property back, it, normally the process was, it would be sold, real estate agents would handle it, and it would be put out on the market for sale. What this chart shows is the share of foreclosures in the inland empire where that did not happen. What happened was, the lenders directly sold the houses to Wall Street investment firms. They never went on the market. They never went to the local real estate agents to sell. They just went directly to people with a strategy of putting together rentals and then using that as a capital gains play over a period of time. This does not include groups that were buying houses in the open market for rental. So it's higher than this, but the highest figure was last year in March, where 58 percent of all the foreclosures went directly to Wall Street. The good news is that this problem is working its way out. These are the notices of default. Notice of default is the first step in the foreclosure process. What it says is, you've got 90 days to bring your mortgage current. You can see that the most recent data in the latter part of 2013 and the first three months of 2014 are less than half of '07, when this problem first started to get into the numbers. So we are almost over this problem, partially because prices went up and we have a much smaller share of families that are now underwater. Now, can the issues facing Victorville coming from its housing market be diminished by increasing future lot sizes and home sizes? What I started out by doing here was to look at, where are the prices as of 2013? What did the prices look like? You can see here that Victorville was at 196,437. That's the median price, half above, half below. Pinion Hills was roughly the same, so was Adelanto. Feland and Apple Valley were higher. Hesperia was lower. Hellendale was way lower. And then Barstow is the lowest. And I put the, I tried to get the data on the areas where the planning department had said, these are the places with larger lot minimums, to see how things compared when I went through these data. When you look at the existing home market, Victorville in 2013, all the homes sold, had the highest prices of the incorporated cities. I was a little surprised. I expected that to be Apple Valley. It was not. Feland and Pinion Hills were 10,000 to 16,000 higher. Apple Valley was a little lower, and then down through Hesperia, Adelanto, and Barstow. So in the existing home market, the city has done rather well. I left on this chart also those yellow-ish bars for the, all of the counties in Southern California, because there's a message in there. And the message is, the high desert is substantially less expensive than any of the counties of Southern California. That is what tended to drive people here, and it is why they will be driven here again as the economy recovers. It is a fact of life that this is the way the markets have worked. I went through this before, but important here are the green bars. What I was looking at is the areas with larger lot sizes. What do we see in terms of density for rental-occupied? And you will notice that Victorville's at 431, but you see in every case, even with the larger lot sizes, substantially higher rental-occupied density than you get in the owner-occupied products. And this is a recurring theme that you see as you go through the region. I then looked at the question of lot sizes, assessed valuation, and average homes. I first of all, looked at lot sizes in the city from 7,000 to 8,999 square feet. The average size lot within there was 7,640 square feet. If I looked at the group from 9,000 to just under 11,000, the average lot size was 9,816. If I extended that band all the way up to just short of 15,000 square feet, the average lot size was 10,815 square feet. Then I looked at, what is the county, excuse me, what are the sizes of the homes according to the assessor's office on those lots? The largest lots in the city averaged 2,649 square feet, and they are on those 7,640 average square foot lots. On the larger lots, it drops down to 2,443 and 2,434. So they are somewhat smaller houses on those larger lots existing today in the city. Looking at the assessed valuation according to the county assessor's office, the highest assessed valuation was 141,421. On the 7,640 square foot lots, drops to 126 in some odd on the other two bands of 9,000 to 11,000, 9,000 to 15,000. Then crime calls and lot size. Again, because I have the data to be able to do this, I took a look at that. Again, looking at the average lot sizes in the circle, then over here at the number of calls per, at the number of crime calls, and then finally crimes per home. It was 1.08 in the 7,640 square foot lots. It was 1.27 in both the 9 to 11 and the 9 to 15,000. So this gets, I think, somewhat below the data that the sheriff was sharing with you. Absentee-owned homes, that is, do lot sizes correlate at all with what's going on in absentee-owned homes? People that lost their houses, et cetera? You could see there that in Hellendale, where, at least according to the planning department, they have 10,000 square foot minimums, 52 percent of the homes are absentee-owned. In Feland, it's 50.4. In Pinion Hills, it's 38. Here in the city, it's 26.1. Of the ones with 10,000 square foot lots, only Apple Valley was lower at 22.3, but not even there, I would suggest, that much lower. So as I look at those numbers, the conclusion I draw from it, it is very hard to make the case that the larger lots have much of an impact on the issues that are emanating out of your housing stock, be they issues involving crime, and issues involving density, issues involving home values. It does not show up in the numbers. And I should, by the way, tell you, I'm a data nerd. This is what I do. I just look at this stuff, and I'm presenting it to you. The BIA got these today as the final draft. That's the reason it got to you so late, and I do apologize for that. Now, the last thing I looked at is economic impact. In order to do this, the first thing I did was model average production. And I looked at the period 2000 to '03 and the period '07 through '10. So it's not the worst, but it's not the absolute max either. In that period, 588 homes per year were sold, new homes were sold. I have three prices that came from one of the major developers that said, this is what we would build in the area. I chose the shares, 1,900 square foot homes, the largest, because it tends to be an affordable market, 2,350, and then 2,775. It averages out at about 2,600 square feet if you do a weighted average. And looking at that, what you see is the annual square footage. And then there are two issues. One, building out using existing lot sizes, you'd have 9,817 homes built. Building out with the increased lot sizes, you would have 6,577. So my challenge was to look at, what is the economic impact of that difference? In order to do that, one of the things I did was I modeled a 15-house tract. What, what would it take to build it? It would take 28 workers. They averaged $35,000 each. So the total labor cost is 980,000. The square footage in those, those homes would be 3,300, 375. So the cost per square foot from labor would be $29.36 a square foot. I also looked at items that would be definitely bought in the high desert, like concrete. And $8.99 would be spent per square foot in the high desert on items that would be purchased here. And then other sorts of things that would be bought locally at 250. In addition to that, I assumed local real estate agents would charge a 6 percent commission. Over time, I included inflation at zero, so I did not include, increase either the costs or the prices of the houses, so that everything can be thought of in current prices. If you build out 9,817 homes, looking at each piece of that, you'd see a potential for a construction payroll impact. And I understand that, underscore that word potential, because I want to talk about the issue of where labor lives as I go along. But the potential is for $641 million impact on labor. $196 million of items bought in the high desert, construction materials, like I say, like concrete. And then another 54.6 for just miscellaneous items. The homes, if we sold them at the prices indicated, would sell for a total of $2.1 billion. 6 percent commissions to the local real estate community would be $134 million. Putting that together, what you get as an impact over, through the build-out, would be directly 20,388 construction jobs, 9,315 secondary jobs. What that means is if I put money in the economy, that pays people in the industry. As they spend in the economy, people at Walmart, State or Brothers, and what other also benefit, and that's the 9,315. So it'd be 29,703 jobs over the period of time to build out, which would be 17 years at the 588 per year. Labor income, $1.39 billion would be paid. Value added is a technical term by economists. You've all hear gross domestic product. Gross domestic product is the sum total of all goods made in, in the United States. Well, that's the equivalent figure. It would increase the value added in the desert, high desert, of $2 billion if this occurred within Victorville. And then output, which means all the sales that occur from one entity to another, would be a total of $3.7 billion in business activity that would be set off. That's at 9,817 homes. If we look at 6,577 homes, the potential construction payroll would drop to 430 million. The construction materials to 131, miscellaneous to 36. You'd have a billion 400 million in homes sold, so $89.7 million in real estate commissions. The impact on employment, you see there, 19,881 jobs created. Labor income, 931 million. And then looking at the output figure at the left, essentially 2.7 billion. When we put those together and essentially subtract, we get the reduction in economic impact as a consequence of reduction in lot size. What it would be is altogether 9,821 full-time equivalent, fewer jobs over the period of time, 460 million less in labor income, and in terms of sales between companies, a billion 230 million less sales between companies in the economy. The build-out, as I indicate, if I assume 588 sales a year, the smaller lot sizes, the city would build out in 11 years plus a couple of months. It would be just under 17 years to the build-out at the 588 level if you left the lot sizes where they are. Essentially, what you lose is five to six years' worth of employment, payroll, and output over that period of time. Here is what it would be annually in each year. This is what you would see during the construction period. This is what you would lose during the years that you lost. 1,747 total jobs each year, 81.9 billion, million, excuse me, in labor income, and 217.8 million in sales that would not occur within the economy in the out years that wouldn't occur, that would occur in either case for the first 11 years. Now, a key factor here, and one that you presented to me at the meeting we had just recently, Mayor Cox, is where does labor live? This is a very important issue, because a good deal of the economic impact is where are the workers? Are the workers residents of the high desert? Or are the workers coming from down the hill up here to work? One of the things that begins to answer the question is to ask the question, and I use school districts so I could get the full area data out of the census. The share of workers in the inland empire, the number of workers in the inland empire altogether who worked in construction from '05 through '09, now that's peak years and falling off years, averaged 163,781. 13,832 of those employees, or those workers, excuse me, were in the high desert. High desert, however, was responsible in that period of time for 13.9 percent of new home sales. So the share of people who identified themselves as working in the industry is less than the number of permits that were issued for the high desert, which probably tells you people are, there are some folks coming up here to go to work. So the workforce challenge I would suggest to you, and this is a challenge I would suggest to those of you here as leaders for the industry and for the school districts, is this fact. The construction industry is coming back to the high desert. It's not here now. In this cycle, it will come back. The construction industry does not have all the workers it needs today. What's happened is because of the What's happened is because of the, really, the depression in construction, a lot of workers have either left the area or they are working in other kinds of jobs like logistics. So the sector is hurting for workers. You would like to see those construction jobs go to local residents, I have no doubt. So we need a program to make sure that as the industry starts up, that the workers are ready to go to work in it. I would suggest to you that this requires cooperation between the following players. Number one, local leaders, to coordinate training and job fairs. Number two, the industry to detail the skills they need. Number three, the supplying of training, which would come, I would suggest, through the county workforce investment board, your nine-to-12 grade schools, adult schools, the community college, private schools, regional occupational programs. I should indicate that I'm not giving you pie in the sky here. This is exactly what is going on in the medical care industry. It is exactly what's going on in manufacturing, and it's exactly what's going on in logistics down the hill, as each of those sectors is gearing up for their recovery. The supplying of specialty instructors would probably have to come from the construction industry. And then you would have to have a commitment by the industry, if the local people are here, that the job fairs and stuff would cause that hiring to occur here. I would suggest this is something that you might want to be seriously considering, because getting the workforce here to be the ones performing is really crucial to those economic impacts. Another issue that jumped up, and there's just a couple more, is the question of aesthetics. I think it was just taken care of rather well. I am a great believer that the key is not lot sizes, it is architecture. What is the architecture? Contrast two campuses, the campus of UC Riverside and the campus of Cal State San Bernardino. UC Riverside is a, they made massive buildings, and they really destroyed the whole feeling of being on that campus. Cal State San Bernardino has not made that mistake. This architecture can solve a host of issues. One of the things that I recall specifically on the crime question was driving around with the sheriff who runs the police operations in Moreno Valley. And he drove me through the community to show where architecture worked and where it didn't work in terms of causing difficulties in terms of crime for the sheriff's office in that particular city. So I would suggest that the industry and the city need to be looking at the best projects being built today with regards to architecture because of the importance, I believe, of aesthetics. Section 8 is another issue that has been raised. What happened with Section 8 vis-à-vis the community? The belief is that there is a great deal of Section 8 housing in the community causing issues. What I did was I got a data from the San Bernardino County Housing Authority. Unfortunately, they don't break it down, single-family versus rental versus fourplex, duplex, whatever. Altogether, you have 912 units in the city that are Section 8. You have in 2013, 33,244 residences, I would, as total, including everything, so it's 2.7%. So it is 2.7%, but it is not a massive share. I would suggest if you want to see a massive number, you go to the city of San Bernardino. Finally, the budget impact was the last issue I took a look at, and it is the reason this report is somewhat late, because I got some data from the city manager, and I've been going over it and over it and looking at a variety of things. I would suggest to you that, to the extent that this is an issue for you, there is really only one way to handle it. And that is to hire a professional firm, and I do not do this, so I'm not looking for work, but a professional firm that looks at this issue. And there are some really good ones. I've just been working with one in the city of Coachella on a very large project there. The key thing here is to, number one, the starting point has been a past look, the League of Cities that are very rough, look at this issue. And the city manager was kind enough to share it with me. Here's what really needs to look at. Every kind of revenue source needs to be documented, whether it is sales taxes, property taxes, county, city, state, whatever, to take a look at what's being generated, both by the housing and by the people. A second thing is on the costs. The costs have to be for here, not an average for the rest of the universe. When I took a look at the League's data, and this was very rough, and you can't really do this on the back of an envelope, and I apologize for that, but I noticed that the League's sales tax data did not include, for instance, an allowance for something like Measure I and the firms, the bodies that come back to the city for a Measure I. The League also omitted, and I believe you participate in this, most cities do, the 5% share of Prop 172 funds that revolve back to cities for law enforcement. There's a couple of cities that are accepted from that, but I don't think it's you. The third thing is to, when you're doing per capita, and I called the former undersheriff, Rich Beamer, and I asked Rich, what is an appropriate way to allow for the fact that when you take a city like Victorville that has a large employment contingent, how do you come up with a way of allowing for that in the various per capita? And he suggested that the addition of the number of residents plus the number of workers in the city is an appropriate base to allow for both of those. And that would be a base of 150,368, using the 2013 population and the 2014 population of workers. In the League of Cities study, they estimated the per capita police cost at $504. Looking at your 2013 budget, it would be $399 in Victorville. Fire costs, the League was at 280, Victorville was at 258. On library costs, the League was at 84, Victorville was at 14. Park and rec, Victorville, excuse me, the League was at 112, Victorville is 90. Now, there are other adjustments that have to be made. One of the things I noticed in looking at the League study, they were estimating 10,000 square foot lots. And so I estimated it with a higher population ratios for the smaller lots. That is my website, data like this is available on it. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you, and if there's any questions I can answer on any of this, I'd be very happy to make the attempt.
Thank you, Dr. Husing. From the council members first, and then the planning commission, are there any questions of Dr. Husing at this point?
I just had one. John, you had a slide early in the presentation on assessed valuations. It kind of surprised me. Your assessed valuations indicated that larger lot sizes had lower assessed valuations.
That is what the data said.
And I wondered if those assessed valuations might indicate that the larger properties were owned and held longer, and that Prop 13 and that impact would have any effect, or...
It could have had an effect. On the other hand...
Or sale prices.
On sale price, well, the assessed valuations, that is a possibility. That is a possibility.
Just because they were held longer, older values.
On the other hand, when you look at the level of turnover, there's probably less of that than one would expect, particularly given the fact that you've had such a high incidence of foreclosures on those larger lots. So it would probably equal itself out. I would guess, but I don't know.
To add on to that, one of the questions that I had, if the larger lots did, because we have a large number of larger lots that the city incorporated from the county or annex that do not have curbed gutter sidewalks, streetlights, fire hydrants, and drainage systems, and they're all large lots, I hope they weren't put into this mix, because that would really change the...
All I looked at was the raw data. I couldn't tell you whether that was the case or not. But as I said, I broke them into the categories, and smaller and larger, but that's as far as I could go with the data at the time I was looking at it.
I have a question.
Question.
Who paid you to do this presentation? Was it the city, or was it the building industry?
It's the building industry, but I will also tell you, they haven't even seen the report till about right now.
That's what concerns me, is that the timing of this report was so untimely that our staff hasn't had any opportunity to go through the data, understand the formulas you use, and I think that our council members brought up some good points that, you know, I mean, I've taken two years of statistics in college, and, you know, numbers can be skewed, and it's just how you develop them and put them together, and who pays you to develop the numbers?
I will take great issue with that last statement. I have built a reputation for 50 years of being ruthless with my clients. I don't care what their agenda is. I wouldn't be standing here before you if that wasn't the case.
I have to chime in on that. I think Mr. Husing's, Dr. Husing's reputation is long established. He's a hard-nosed economist. I wouldn't question that, John.
Next, the council members? Council, Planning Commission members, any questions of Dr. Husing? One comment, somewhere, I just, I wrote it down, that you indicated, let me find it. Oh, increased future, increased lots and home sizes. We've never discussed, that I know of, of increasing home sizes. That's never been a question.
On one of the slides that I was looking at from the planning commission, or the planning department, it had going from 1,400 square feet to 1,600 square foot minimums. That's why that was on there. I mean, that's all I had as input.
Mayor, I just wondered about that.
It is part of the development codes that was proposed by planning, but even the minimums that were proposed are still well below what is typically being built today. I think that's probably why it hasn't really been called out, because even though the minimum size of a home has been proposed to be increased, it really wouldn't have an impact on construction as we see it today.
All right, okay. Planning commissioners, at this point in time, what is the desire of the planning commission? My desire is to take a five-minute break. Anyone agree? We saw we're going to take a five-minute break.
He hates everybody, man.
Amazing.
I don't think, I wouldn't worry. I trust his data. I think the implication...
That'd be item number four. Thank you very much for being patient. We are still on item number two. We had Scott Webb and Chris Borcher that made a presentation, and they have more information. And then, of course, a lot of information on these two presentations were for the benefit of the council, the planning commission, and those in the audience. So at this time, I'd like to ask either Scott Webb, Chris Borcher, or both to come back, which you can finish the presentation at this time, and make the other comments that staff is prepared to make.
Go ahead. Because we will, we did, as Carlos alluded to, we did have a meeting with them at 3:00, went over the design guidelines and their proposed changes. Overall, not, you know, they were things we could live with. There was a lot of language changes from shalls to shoulds, that they want the shoulds, we're putting in the shalls, we're prohibiting, they're discouraging, that type of thing. We can live with some of them, we don't necessarily agree with some of them, but there were a few, a little bit more major points that we saw, and that was, one was the garages. Having the garage faces at the front of the, they would like larger percentages of that, whereas we were recommending 55, 50%. They're recommending only requiring 25% of the houses to be, the garage to be set back, and to limiting the amount of percentage that could cover the front of the lot. And again, though, I think it's important to point out too, though, that their proposal is based on 7200s, keeping 7200s and not doing, not even thinking about 10,000s at all. So, you know, ours is still kind of thinking, no, we should go with 10,000s and the design guidelines. So there was a little bit of difference in opinion on that. Was there anything else that we needed to hit on? Yeah, we don't, we don't mind meeting again and going over, hashing those out before we come through, forward with a code amendment on design guidelines at all. That's not a problem at all.
Staff, we appreciate you working with the Building Industry Association and anyone else who has a dog in this fight, or even if it's just an interest because they live in a neighborhood. You have a council and a planning commission that's extremely concerned about where we're going and what the city is going to look like. We have to be reasonable, we have to take into consideration where we're at, what we can reasonably do, and we're going to all work hard to do that. I don't, I've kind of driven through the different neighborhoods, and one of the things that I've noticed just stands out if you have a house that has different colors and then a white garage door. And there's a whole street, every garage door is just white, the towns are different color. Within two blocks, there are several houses, and the garage doors are the same color as the houses. And I went back and looked at it twice, you know, because the only question you can have is why? I mean, why would somebody do that? Such a simple change made all the difference in the world. I also noticed that we have some houses, especially if a truck parks in front of the garage door, it comes to the edge of the sidewalk. But in most instances, the property right-of-way is at least 10-foot or 12-foot behind the sidewalk, which means they can't even get a vehicle on their own property, it's sitting on the city right-of-way. And I'll meet with staff as to why some houses are allowed to have that very small front setback. It must be a 15-foot setback or less.
It's actually 20 feet, but I think trucks in general have gotten larger, so yes, it does. And if you don't pull right up to the garage door, it almost, the bumper almost is in the sidewalk. You're right.
I thought maybe it was because the right-of-way from the sidewalk was different, where the right-of-way may be directly cutting the sidewalk, in other cases, it's four or five feet beyond the sidewalk. But I don't know that. But these are questions, I'm sure they're different. I looked at the mays and shalls and should, and we know that shoulds don't work, so I think we ought to settle that upfront. Say all the things in the world about the children should be good, and they're not going to be. So once we agree on the standards, I hope that we will agree not to argue about those things. Staff, do you have any items that you want to bring to the council right now? Otherwise, I'm going to go to the council for discussion.
You know, I don't know. That was a lot of information. It was hard to keep up. You know, we were trying to think of one comment he had made when he's already on to the next one, so it was a lot of information to take in. For the presentation from Adam, again, pictures and products that are located down the hill. Victorville has plenty of 5,000-square-foot lots in existence today that he could have looked at and taken pictures of and given you the home values of and things like that. So maybe that's something we can look at if you're interested, but... And then, for Dr. Husing's report, like I said, a lot of information, hard to keep up, but just had the question, you know, questions, what is driving up those prices, investors or owners? He mentioned how many absentee owned we have. He mentioned how many absentee owned we have. The crime numbers that he showed didn't appear to denote what single-family residents, they went to condos and then single-family rentals, but they didn't have how many single-family residential crimes were being reported or called. Home prices were higher in larger lot areas. I know at one slide they mentioned, but then on the second slide, he showed you where Victorville was here, and then Pinion Hills and Phelan were there, higher in value than Victorville, so...
I wondered if that was because they have larger lots there? No, no, no.
Again, just a point. The home sizes where he showed you slide were 7,200 versus 9,000. There's 9,000-square-foot lots in a 7,200 subdivision. They're usually the cul-de-sac lots or corner lots and things like that, so I'm not quite sure the... Pointed out that there's a 2,600-square-foot lot on a 7,200, but a 2,400 on a 9,000, so I'm not sure. That's just a different product type on a different lot in the same tract it could be.
I'd seldom speak for the council because they have ideas and feel strongly on their own, but we are trying to do the right thing for citizens of Victorville and for the future development, and try to make sure that we do not repeat mistakes that we have made in the past. And at one time, I can remember when city council decided, working with a builder, that half-acre lots would be fine. Individual argued since they were half-acre, they shouldn't have curb gutters and sidewalks and streetlights, sewers. And after the garbage truck and the mailman got stuck and refused to serve, Victorville had to go back and assist in putting in curb gutters and sidewalk. Still, half of that huge subdivision, which is almost a square mile, is without sewers. And there are many half-acre lots that if you drive down the street, you swear they're 4,000-square-foot lots because the houses are together, and they have, you know, four-fifths of that in the back where they're storing garbage. We can't allow that. We just cannot. You just can't. That's just a horrible, horrible area. I guess people are happy with it, but I can't imagine why. There've got to be, so if we're going to have, whether it's a 7,200-square-foot lot or 10,000 or 15 or whatever it is, I hope we agree that there are going to be some kind of standard so that they... You don't have a 7,200-square-foot lot, but you have huge backyards that you can't get to or use. I don't think it's the, particularly the 7,200-square-foot, that's the key. But on the other hand, it's easier to build the larger houses on lots, and, you know, I think there's three different designs, and so you go down the street and it's 3-2-1, 1-2-3, 3-2-1, 1-2-3, until you come to the corner, and they look great until you look into the backyard and find out these huge houses don't have a backyard. It's also interesting that right now, I'm trying to get a broker and an agent to come here, and they don't want to. They're having difficulty selling some houses that don't have backyards, and they don't want to speak up about that. So I, we have a lot of work to do here. And staff, you have a lot of work because you're going to have to assist us in going through this and providing an analysis of... The presentations were great by the speakers, but we need to get this down where we can understand it and rationalize it. There was a feeling that, for some reason, the city was mad at the BIA and was going to give them a hard time. I didn't hear that from city staff or planning commissioner, planning commission staff, city council. That was generated outside of this building, and it doesn't exist. I just have to clear that up because if someone wants to pick a fight, I'm always up for a fight. Always. But we're not starting it. That isn't our goal, we're not doing it, and we're doing everything to avoid that. So council members, it's time to speak.
I'm just sitting here looking at this, Dr. Husing's very first slide on population. If you look at 1997, the population of Victorville was right at 60,000. Today, it's 120. In 17 years, the population has doubled. I'm assuming in the same 17 years, our housing stock has doubled. And if we've got 24,000 now, that means we had 12,000 17 years ago. In 17 years, we've added 12,000 homes to our housing stock. In his example, he was talking about adding, he was projecting out 9,800 homes, and the $4 billion of impact that was going to have on our local economy. In the last 17 years, we've added 12,000 homes, and the full economic impact of those homes has hit our economy, and we've all enjoyed the benefit of that. And the city of Victorville today is having a very difficult time serving those homes. We're losing ground.
We are.
We are losing ground. That causes me some really serious concern about projecting and looking at all that economic benefit that we're likely to see, which I don't argue with. I don't debate that. But I'm deeply concerned about the problem we're having today, serving the population we've got. We're cutting everything in sight so that we can keep police and fire and public safety at the top of our agenda. Streets suffer, parks suffer, just about everything we do suffers. So I think you can't just look at this long-term, or not even long-term, the short-term benefit of all that growth and development without looking at the long-term cost. Because if we continue and explode another 12,000 homes, I'm really worried about where we're going to be in 17 years.
I think we have to look at that picture.
I think one of the things we have to look at is the houses that are going to be available coming onto the market that currently are vacant or boarded up. On a complaint, an individual who knew me called me, I went out, looked at the house, it's sad shape, it's boarded up, and this lady said, you know, this is real simple. The banks are going to wait till the impound account is gone in with a year, and then they're going to collect insurance on it, when in fact, if the city's code enforcement would cite the building, maintain it, and lien the property, they would get rid of it real fast. And boy, what a great idea, and I hope the council will endorse that. We have code enforcement, we have one or two cancers in a neighborhood, all we have to do is go in, give them the notice, post the property, put the lawn back in or the rock garden or whatever it is, maintain it, and annually lien the property. The first time the bank gets that bill, they're going to put it on the market. Bet you anything. I hope we pursue that, too. Too many houses are sitting there that's an eyesore.
Item number three and four.
Pardon?
That's item number three and four on the agenda.
Okay, sorry, I got ahead of you, but I think that we have a lot of ideas that we want to look at, so, okay. We're still on item two. Other questions? Comments, planning council?
It's clear that our chief of police came up here and said last week that he needed 14 more deputies, and that's for what we have now. If we continue down this path, like Councilman Kennedy said, we cannot continue to serve, and we are behind the curb. So something has to slow, and we cannot keep building at this rate and growing big government in order to keep up. We don't have the money. It's too difficult. Like he said, we're cutting everywhere we can.
Comments from the planning commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, when it comes to the design guidelines and building standards, I've kind of felt all along, even before tonight's meeting, when we first started talking about this, I'm not so sure about the exact lot size, but I am pretty sure still that the design guidelines, the look of the home, the quality of the neighborhood is what's going to make a big difference going forward. So once again, whether it be 7,200-square-foot, a 10,000-square-foot lot, I want to make sure that I have my arms around exactly what that means with the design standards from Chris and his staff. What can, what kind of standards can we get if we end up, you know, staying at a 7,200? Can we meet a lot of this stuff that Chris and the other experts have worked out? Can we meet those on those lots? Or is it definitely going to take a larger lot with larger setbacks? That's my, that's my biggest concern is the design standards, and that's what I personally want to be most focused on as we go forward and get to an end result on this.
Comments from planning commissioners? Mr. Hering? Or did you say, no, I'm sorry. Chairman, chairperson, porter? Okay, we're going to move then to item number three, commercial land use restrictions. Staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Chris kind of jumped the gun on that one, unless you have questions for him regarding the other types of businesses that he mentioned, such as massage, such as internet cafes, those sorts of things. I think the direction we got last week was clear enough that you certainly want to look at regulations that would reduce that because it does have an effect on the quality of life of the citizens of Victorville. So we can, we can move ahead to item four and five, I think is our next presentation from staff, unless there's questions.
No objections from council or planning commission. Item four, I have a card before we have a comments on this from Dan Nackerman, who wants to speak on item four. You would come up, please, and address your comments to the council and planning commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor, planning commissioners, and council members. My name is Dan Nackerman. I'm the president and CEO of the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino. I just want to, again, kind of introduce myself and let you know that I'll be available as you go through this. I think it's very commendable to try to take the bull by the horns and continue to make Victorville a better place to live. Just a little bit about housing authorities. There are about 35 of them in the United States. They primarily rely on federal funding, as do we. We don't rely on county funding or city funding. At the same time, as I mentioned at your last meeting, the city is part of the jurisdiction, so I consider myself as working for you and will be available to help you do that. I'm here to talk a little bit about some statistics, not nearly as many as Dr. Husing, and not nearly as quickly while I go through them. We do take our role very seriously at the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino. We happen to be, I mentioned, there's 3,500 housing authorities. I especially liked the part of Dr. Husing's presentation concerning jobs and economics. That is really our kind of relatively recent strategy as well. As an example, this term, housing choice voucher, is kind of HUD's modern term for Section 8. We're one of three or four out of those 35 in the country that have time limits for Section 8. You can only stay in our program a maximum of five years, and that would be non seniors, non-disabled. We're also very, very strict about crime compared to other housing authorities. We go back for 10 years with background checks for every adult household member. That's, most agencies go back two or three years. That's really helped these programs have a much better record, if you will, no pun intended, over the last few years. There were a series of bills passed in the 90s called one-strike laws that also allow us, when we are the landlord or the program director, to terminate assistance based on one problem, one problem relating to violence or serious crime. We use that program very aggressively. In fact, the sheriff's department and your department won some awards four or five years ago, when I was here before, for being so aggressive about using that. It was an award from the Office of Inspector General in Washington, DC. But back to the economics, we house about 30,000 people in the county, relatively low-income. In this city, I'm sorry, my time's up already. Is that right?
Go ahead. This is, we are working with County Housing Authority. We really appreciate the work you're doing, we're looking forward to working with you, and I know you have some really important points to make.
Okay. We do, you have a relatively small amount as a percentage of both your rental housing and of your total population of formal affordable housing through the Housing Authority. Dr. Husing mentioned the 912 vouchers. That's a lower percentage than cities like Highland and Adelanto and others. Also, as a percentage of the total population, it's a lower percentage than cities like Ontario and Redlands. So there is kind of a misconception that there's a lot of formal public housing in Section 8 residence in Victorville. Now, that doesn't mean there are not other types of affordable housing that we're not involved in. There's not a lot that I'm aware of in Victorville, and of course, the term affordable housing brings kind of a lot of stereotypes as well. I'm prepared to help you as we go forward with what those differences are and that kind of thing. To give you an example of those differences, there's some terms, extremely low-income, very low-income, low-income. In this county, using the county median, preschool teachers, paramedics, male clerks, and people like that are very low-income compared to county standards. People like licensed vocational nurses, construction laborers, even truck drivers who make pretty good money are low-income compared to the county median. So these are people that usually work. In fact, 75% of the people we house in the county are either seniors or children, so the percentage of kind of working adults is fairly limited. Just a few more points. We are also one of the few housing authorities that is very active in homeownership. We sell one to two houses to first-time homeowner owners in the county, and we believe in homeownership. We think homeownership helps a neighborhood, it helps stabilize a neighborhood, and we're willing to help here. We're willing to help with the vacant blighted houses that need to be rehabbed and resold. We do that in other cities, and we'd like to do more of that here through some of your neighborhood stabilization programs. One thing I did, the only thing I kind of disagreed with Dr. Husing on was the calls per unit. He interpreted the 1.13 calls per unit at single-family, non-rental homes to be, you know, relatively low compared to the 1.54 at apartments. We see that as relatively similar. People that do live in apartments, we think of apartments as a stage of life. I often ask people to raise their hand if they've never lived in an apartment, and people rarely do. We like to think of it as a stage of life. The people that do live in apartments are quite often generally younger, I'm sure they would be in this city. So statistics like that, to us, are not a dramatic difference compared to the stereotype, I guess we could say. We have made some commitments to this council. I wasn't here at that time, but we carefully track complaints here. We are willing to report on those for the city of Victorville. We committed to do that beginning in 2011. This is actually the only city we really keep very detailed records on that. And again, we can help. We can help. In fact, we're also, I just heard, I think the next subject will be landlords... Oh, I forgot to mention, we also have public housing in Victorville, one unit, which is one single-family home. So again, contrary to the stereotype, there are a lot of private landlords here. We do own one property besides that one unit. It's a 161-unit site called Andalusia, 3rd Avenue and Green Tree Lane. It gets five stars for everything on the internet, so we're proud to be that landlord. But we'll also help you with the private landlords. If there are private landlords who are irresponsible, we will kick them off the program. If there are residents in the housing choice voucher program who are involved in crime or irresponsible, we will kick them off the program. We also, as I mentioned, will help you purchase and rehab foreclosed homes and bring homeowners into those. And we can also help you collect business licenses from any landlords that we pay. We're figuring out a way to do that with HUD's permission, but we'll help you collect those and register those lands or if they're not registered. And all the promises I just made, we will do without city money and without county money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nackerman. We're looking forward to working with you. I have no other cards on the subject. Staff, any comments on four or five? Questions from the city council?
Yes, from listening last week, it sounded like on the proactive residential code enforcement, it's unanimous that you all want us to proceed forward, and George Durant and his code enforcement team to start doing that. I just wanted to point out that it is a huge endeavor, and the sign enforcement that we did on the commercial properties was 2,200 properties, businesses, that were contacted, and that took six months. So we're talking about close to 30,000 residential properties. So I just wanted to lead in with that. He's raring to go, he's gearing up to do it, but we also wanted to talk about the next topic first, and that's the rental inspection program. program, in that we can, if a third or a quarter to a third of our housing, single-family housing, is rentals, we can do this program and pay the cost of two new code enforcement officers to actually do the enforcement. So, George has more information on that.
George, Durand, go ahead.
Chris. Oh, thanks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, planning commissioners. As Chris stated, yes, there's approximately over thirty thousand units currently. As I stated last week, there's six officers and myself. I wanted to briefly kind of go over what I went through last week as to what our proactive enforcement would actually accomplish and what we're going to be addressing. Unmaintained yards, storage of unoperated vehicles, these are all conditions that are either in owner-occupied or rental locations. Lack of structure, maintenance, paint, exterior architectural features. And eventually, the rental inspection program will end up addressing likely problematic tenants. And so, some ordinance in some of the cities that we've seen have elements in the ordinance to address those particular issues. How we would accomplish that systematically, without a doubt. Thirty thousand units is a lot of units, possibly forming focus groups so that we can address the communities that are highly spoken of by our residents, complainants, that typically are very involved in what we do. Mobile technology likely. We need to use the apps. I think there's a presentation, some discussion is going to be coming on later about that. And the use of the rental inspection program, obviously. When we looked at the rental inspection program, we also looked at inspection programs from other cities, which will be the next slide coming after this one here. But, oh, it's okay. Yeah, let me, let me.
Oh, go back.
Sorry. We looked at primarily three possible incentives to address properties that are well-maintained. Other cities have done the same thing. They adopted options such as a low initial program fee and a higher reinspection fee. In other words, it encourages consistent property maintenance and initial inspection compliance. The idea there is to go out once, the property knows that it's a lower fee, and the penalties for reinspection is a lot higher. Self-certification. The city of Eastville uses self-certification. It provides a high initial inspection fee, but allows the property owner to enter into an agreement with the city to self-certify himself, promising that he's going, he or she's going to maintain the property in good standing. And you eventually may be kicked off that self-certification option if a complaint is lodged or if code enforcement goes through and conducts an audit and finds that their property is unmaintained.
Or a crime.
I'm sorry?
Or a crime.
Or a crime, absolutely. That option provides, again, a higher inspection fee and a lower, considerably lower fee, primarily to provide funding to the program. There's also the option for a biannual fee waiver. The city of San Bernardino uses that option, but creates some difficulty with budgeting with an inconsistent revenue fund to sustain the program. Here, we formed basically a synopsis of what other cities are doing, including the city of Eastville. City of Ontario, city of Eastville, kind of an option, do conduct interior inspections. Our scope primarily will focus on exterior. You'll see that the fees vary substantially, specifically with the city of Palmdale, at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per property annually. There's the city of Eastville. They introduced a one-hundred-and-eleven-dollar initial fee and a forty-one-dollar fee if the owner self-certifies himself, or they can choose not to enroll, and it's a one-hundred-and-eleven dollars annually. Our fee is currently with the city is the, a business license is issued to an owner that may have multiple units. If the business license, if the business license is issued to the owner and has more than ten units, that person pays a twenty-five-dollar annual fee. If the business license is issued to an owner that has less than nine units, he pays a one-time fee of twenty-five dollars, and there's no renewal currently in place in our ordinance. So, there's a problem there.
So, we're not looking for you to take an action, but maybe give us some direction that you think this is appropriate, and then we can come back with a code amendment in the future with the options, with some options on the possible fee rate, on the possible how you allow good landlords to benefit in the future. I know that was a main concern of Councilmember Kennedy, so we tried to address that in that way, and he's absolutely right. Why should good landlords have to pay for all the bad? So, we do, we would like to work that in if that's your direction, so that's where we're at.
Isn't Eastville the city that's going to go away?
I'm not even sure where, that was presented by the BIA. It was included in their document. It was given to you, I think, recently, possibly the end of last week. It was an example that they were proposing. We just used it because...
Is it a real city?
Yes. I believe it's a fairly new city, near Chino, I think.
You know, Chris, speaking as a landlord, I didn't even know we only pay a one-time city license. That should be an annual...
Unless you own more than ten units, yes.
Yeah, that should pay an annual fee, I would think.
Yeah, it's really...
Plus, I think some combination of those first two bullet points really makes sense, the self-certification along with the variable fee depending on performance. I think those all work.
I think that we, at last week's meeting, were kind of in agreement that we should move forward on this. We just wanted to make sure that it's not violating, at least from my perspective, not violating any state law, and then you worked with those that are in the property management business, especially managing lots of residential units, to make sure that we're working in cohesion with them. But I think, instead of getting into the details over here, I think that it'd be appropriate for you to go ahead and come back to the council with some sort of proposal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. That's, yeah, we were just looking for...
Unless I'm speaking out of turn.
I think we're all going to have questions and comments. My concern is that you will have a rental unit that's in top-notch condition with the people living there, the renters living there, keeping it in excellent shape and very presentable to the street facade. And next door, you have a homeowner that's not doing any of that, and yet we're going to charge the individual because they're a renter or because they're renting it out. With the new code enforcement to hold everyone accountable, do we really need that program to distinguish between whether a renter or owner?
You don't need it. It makes it easier to fund new officers, which we should have in order to take on a task like this of this many properties. The homeowner next door who owns this property and it's in bad condition can get charged and will get charged if he doesn't comply and doesn't fix his property. He'll be charged the way we do on any typical code enforcement for cost recovery and for anything that we need to do to clean up the property. We can charge that property owner as well. It's just this program would help to alleviate those issues ahead of time, hopefully.
Well, we have, I'm not opposed to the program. I like the idea of cleaning up the whole city, and I know that these programs have been successful in other areas. But in most cities where they have code enforcement on a complaint basis, we're going to have code enforcement on a proactive basis. It's a tremendous difference, and I think we should proceed with caution, but I agree with staff's approach on this, so. Yes?
On the complaint basis, I think that that's really important, too, because you can, being we're going to be proactive, we can get rid of a lot of problems in our neighborhoods just by sending you a picture of what it looks like, because we're only concerned with the outside and giving its location. And if we get rid of a lot of those, we've got pretty much instant beautification. I mean, I can think of a number right now that I can make pictures and send you.
Sure. Number seven. I think we, one of the things I want to caution everyone, I'm already getting complaints about wanting to send code enforcement to, quote, my enemy's house, but it doesn't come out that way, but I know what's going on. I hope that we start, I hope there's a general understanding that in a neighborhood where you may have a half a dozen code violations, one will be really bad and stand out. And I hope we start with those first, because if we do it on a neighborhood by neighborhood or area by area, we're going to have code enforcement on what may be a slight violation compared to another neighborhood that is a major violation. People are going to see that, feel they're picked on, and then we're not going to have cooperation. We've got to have cooperation from the people who live there. And so, when we get the complaints, I hope that, yes, we follow up on the complaints, but if we start on the most egregious violations, you're going to find, number of complaints will drop dramatically when people find out, and inspectors are going to be knocking on the door if they don't clean up their yard, so.
Yeah, on, being in the industry, I can appreciate an inspection program statewide over the last ten years. There have been a number of cities that have implemented programs. Some have been successful, and some have just been adjunct failures. There was one instance where they started a program and never hired any officers, were using the money to offset their budget shortfalls. I mean, that's just unfortunate. I did speak with Tim Johnston at the Department Association at the Island Empire, and they've helped develop a number of programs or inspections throughout the Island Empire, and he would be very much willing to sit down and help to develop something that both ones is compliant with state laws, that we don't violate any laws like interior inspections, which we're not even allowed to do, but yet there have been some cities that have tried to force us to be standing at a door with a key if a tenant would not let us in. That's a conflict. We can't do that. So, but he is willing, and I hope we're able to put something together, because it would definitely help us on our end get rid of problem tenants, for one, but also deal with some of our owners that don't want to do the bare minimum to make a property habitable or deal with issues, so.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I think we've covered four, five, probably six to some degree. That's okay.
Actually, six is a little bit different.
It is?
It is a little bit different, yes. Christian, are you going to introduce Dana, or you want me to? Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Getting tired.
Number seven, Mr. Mayor, we can skip altogether. We had hoped to have a little bit more information. We're in the middle of an evaluation process for number seven, so we'll bring that back at a later time.
Christian, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, commissioners, I'd like to introduce Dana Armstrong. Dana is our solid waste manager. She oversees our solid waste code enforcement as well as a number of programs involved in cleaning up the city. And so, I'd like to ask her to take this from here. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and planning commissioners. And I was going to say, I'm the sixth of seven, but now I guess I am last, and I do have some slides, but not nearly as many as Dr. Husing, and I promise I will be brief and hopefully leave you with some good news, I guess. Tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the Community Service Department Solid Waste Division's current programs for neighborhood cleanup and beautification, and then I will also go over some proposals for some new and expanded programs that we hope will be included in the upcoming fiscal year fourteen, fifteen budget. So, on an overview, the funding for our programs comes from restricted funds. We have the solid waste fund and the landfill fund. It's from user fees charged to residents and businesses for solid waste services as well as landfill tipping fees. As noted, these are restricted funds, so they, unfortunately, they're not allowed to be used for general fund purposes, so they are specific to solid waste programs. These funds are used to pay for a variety of things. We do have two enforcement officers in the solid waste division. We also, the funds also pay for solid waste and recycling collection and collection from residents and businesses as well as customer service and administrative costs. And it also pays for a variety of other programs, including our community cleanup, adopt-a-street and illegal dump cleanup programs. And one other thing, we have some other programs for free disposal of items, which I'll get into more later. As far as our solid waste code enforcement, we work cooperatively with the code enforcement division and development department, which, but our officers really are focused specifically on solid waste issues. We currently have two officers. They enforce our mandatory service requirements for occupied premises. In Victorville, any occupied residential or commercial premise is required to have solid waste service. They also enforce adequate service levels, so you can't be a business with a minimum amount of service and trash spilling out of your dumpsters. You are required to have adequate service to have, so that you don't have problems. They also enforce the prohibition on scavenging from trash and recycling containers. I always like to point out that's stopping theft in process, because the materials, that is a real problem for us, is people removing materials from the recycling containers. It's a loss of revenue for the city. In calendar year 2013, our folks performed about fifteen hundred checks of properties that did not have current solid waste service, and they handled about twenty-six hundred other investigations, complaints, and service requests. So, they're very busy, and another thing that they do do is that they're very involved in contractor compliance. They get involved, if you think about it, we have trash and recycling trucks out around the city, roughly thirty thousand residences. Twice a week, each one of them is being visited by a trash or recycling truck. There are bound to be disputes and issues, and so our officers will get in the middle of that to make sure that our contractor is doing their job correctly per the terms of our contract, and also that the residents are doing what they're supposed to be doing per the municipal code. The other programs that we have, we do have an illegal dump cleanup program. We respond to service requests and complaints, and we also proactively visit areas known to have illegal dumping alleys and some of the, a lot of the dirt extensions of paved roads. We currently are staffed with one maintenance worker and a part-time maintenance aide, or sometimes a court worker, and we borrow a truck from Community Services Parks Division two days a week, so it's a pretty limited operation currently. But last year, they hit about twenty-one hundred locations, picked up seven-hundred-and-fifty mattresses, six-hundred-and-seventy couches, more or less, over seventeen hundred tires, and roughly a hundred-and-fifty tons of trash. That's two guys and a truck two days a week. And there's a lot more out there, and we're limited by our, really the equipment availability. We also have our community cleanup program, which I know a number of the council members are aware of and have participated in. That's twice a year, April, October, six to eight hundred residents per event, twenty-five to thirty-five sites per event, and six to eight tons of litter collected per event. We also have an adopt-a-street program that we coordinate. It currently has twenty-seven groups, thirty-two streets, and all eight of the passeos in the city have been adopted. Last year, calendar year, these volunteers collected over a thousand bags of litter from Victorville roadside. So, we provide them with the supplies and the support. We give them the bags, the sticks, the gloves, and we dispose of the trash. They provide the elbow grease, and it's a great partnership with the community as well as it is with the community cleanup. We do also do neighborhood cleanups, and these are kind of mini-community cleanups. We'll get calls from neighborhood groups, or a concerned citizen, or Eagle Scouts, or high school students saying, hey, I need community service hours, or I'm concerned about an area in my neighborhood. What can we do? We try to get them to the community cleanup, but we will also do one-time cleanups with neighborhood groups. Again, we'll provide a roll-off, the disposal fees, the gloves, the bags. We ask them to gather up a group of volunteers. We have them sign waivers, and then they provide the elbow grease to load the container, and we'll dispose of it. So, we figure if somebody wants to help us keep the community clean, we're going to do everything we possibly can to provide them with what they need to help clean up the community. And then we also have free drop-off disposal. I just mentioned this. We have two recycling centers, one out at our MRF on Abbey Lane and one over on Anacapa. We, at Anacapa, we just started a great new program. We'll take tires free of charge from residents anytime the center is open. We also accept e-waste, appliances, scrap metal. And also, in the city of Victorville, we do have free bulky item pickup for single-family residents twice a year of up to five items per pickup. And our officers are constantly, if they're in a neighborhood and they see somebody with a couch on the side of the house or some large debris, they'll go knock on the door... a couch on the side of the house or some large debris, they'll go knock on the door, give them a flyer, or they'll even offer to call in and schedule a bulky item pickup for them right then. It's free. And we have, we do work closely with George and his crews. I've provided them with flyers about that service, so they make that information available to residents as well. And then also, I want to mention our Household Hazardous Waste Center. It also accepts the e-waste and tires from residents as well. So in terms of looking forward to the future, we've gotten the message that the City Council is interested in a more beautiful city. We've been working on it, but I think we can do more. The city manager asked for ideas and suggestions for proposals for expanded programs. So we are hoping and requesting in the upcoming budget that we can expand the illegal dump and cleanup, neighborhood cleanup program through the purchase of a designated vehicle that we could use full-time on this task, as well as some additional staff to work that program. And all, in addition, we're proposing a new, at least quarterly, it depends how the money runs, but at least quarterly Neighborhood Cleanup Day. This is similar to what Apple Valley has done, where they will let people know, hey, you have a whole bunch of stuff in your yard. Look, here's an opportunity for you to get rid of all this material free of charge. And we'll have at least quarterly events where they can bring their bulky item, their yard debris, their old appliances, their tires, and dispose of these items free of charge. Obviously, we would work closely with George and his officers so that they could make sure to notify residents who might otherwise be on the end of a notice of violation that here's an opportunity to clean up your yard or your house and not have to get the NOV. We also will be proposing a new free yard waste drop-off year-round, and again, I'm kind of working through the details of that. But we get calls from people who say, I just did a major cleanup of my yard. I have tumbleweeds. I have prunings from my trees or shrubs. Where do I get rid of it? Currently, we don't have green waste collection in the city. That's another story. It's kind of, it's a long story. But this would be an opportunity for residents who have that garden trimmings, any time of the year that they could dispose of that material. So there's no reason why they would need to have debris stacked up or tumbleweeds stacked up in their yard. There would be an opportunity for them to dispose of that material free of charge. So those are our ideas for improved programs. And just in closing, I just want to say, we have a kind of a slogan that we use on some of our flyers, and it is, got stuff, good news, the city of Victorville has programs to help. And I think, hopefully, in the new fiscal year, we will have more programs to help, because we do want it to be a partnership. We do want to provide these valuable services to the community, to the individual residents, but also overall, it's going to really improve the community. So, see, it was short.
Thank you, Dana.
Okay? If you have any questions, Christian and I are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, we have a lot of information. I know that we're going to have a lot of questions from both Planning Commissioners and Council. Is staff going to put these together and submit those with recommendations? Are we going to require further hearings? What is your schedule for this agenda?
At this point, staff is kind of waiting to hear from the Council and Commission on how you'd like us to proceed. I know that the Commission continued the development code that was taken to them. They continued it for 90 days. I don't know when that 90 days is up, but we were hoping for some input from both the Council and Commission, based on the input you had today from the BIA and from staff, on how you'd like us to proceed. Would you like us to wait for that 90 days? Would you like us to bring back some other ideas? More or less looking for input and direction at this point.
I, from my point of view, the fact that we have included the Planning Commission and all the hearings, it kind of negates the 90 days, and I don't think that's any longer in play.
I agree. I think we should just get the show on the road.
Councilwoman Vias, I feel like I'm the only one up here by myself. It sounds like the rest of the Council's made up their mind. And a reminder to myself and to this Council that next time I ask for a request at start time of 5:00 p.m., maybe deny my request, because staff added five items to the agenda that I don't even think we were going to be discussing tonight. My understanding was crime and density and design guidelines and lot sizes, and that's what I expected that we'd be discussing. All these other things, no deference to staff who made the presentations, they're all important, but I think the first two carry a significant amount of weight. I'd like to echo Councilmember Kennedy's comments with respect to John Husing. The man can't be bought. He's 50 years in this business, very well-respected, at least by, I'm sure, several elected officials, community leaders, and the numbers do speak for themselves. They're hard to ignore, economic impacts, job creation and such. And so I would venture to say that if we were just to shove this forward and increase lot sizes, that we would not be creating jobs, but actually doing away with jobs. I think that there's so much information that we've received. I mean, I've got, I've collected, and I'm sure Mayor Cox, you have the same thing, this volume of information, plus I've got fiscalization of land use in a three-ring binder, and there's no way that I've read all this, and I doubt any member of the Commission or City Council has either. The fact that we got this report from Dr. Husing tonight was based upon the fact that our city manager requested that he move his schedule around to be here, when he originally was going to present on the 6th of May, if I remember correctly, but since we weren't going to have a council meeting. I know that Doug had spoken with him, and he was able to move his schedule around, so that is primarily the reason that all of us, including the BIA, got that tonight. When we look at the various challenges with respect to crime and density, I think that, you know, our captain, Sam Lucia, spoke to this issue, but with any population increase, additional crime is to be expected. I mean, I don't know anywhere you could look in this state, in this nation, in the world, where there wouldn't be a corresponding increase in crime as a result of increase in population. You know, in talking with our constituents, the people out on the streets, lot sizes is not what they want. They want additional deputies on the street. And yet, we're focusing on something that will have absolutely no impact on their lives tomorrow, a year from now, or even 10 years from now, because of the vested lots, the tentative tracks that have been recorded. Those can be built on tomorrow, and nothing is going to change. So while we should be focusing on things such as putting additional deputies on the streets, increasing code enforcement, and those types of ideas, we're focusing on lot sizes as if somehow it is a saving grace to what this city and the problems that we are facing today. I just think that this council needs to step back. There is a ton of information that we've received here. Moving forward so quickly on such a huge policy issue does not make a lot of sense in light of all the information that we've received. And, I mean, unless it's just you want to increase lot sizes and you could care less about all this information, whether it came from staff, Dr. Husing, or the BIA, then I guess that that would be your prerogative. But I just think that this council, being a new council, not a council of the past, should not force things through in the same way that you all have indicated that previous councils have done. You know, the reality is, is that something this big needs a lot of time, a lot of review, a lot of input from various individuals, various parties. I, for one, when you ask for direction from the council, would like to see more dialogue go on between all the various parties. I may be the only one, but again, there's just so much information, and for us as a council to have digested even the information we received here tonight in the short amount of time that we got it, and really begs the question as to why we're moving so quickly and so forcefully on this issue.
Comments from other council members? I am, but I'm not. Yeah, Mr., do you want to go last? Do you want me to go last? You know, this, one of the things that we have agreed on, what I've agreed on, that we need to upgrade the city. I'm not moving quickly on lot sizes. This has become the issue, apparently. It's not my issue. There's an awful lot of things that we've received, an awful lot of things. In fact, at one point tonight, I was convinced that we need to make a motion to have 5,000 square foot lots, $500,000 homes. Don't reduce the price. And, you know, we're going to be in what we never made, being unrealistic to what city of Victorville is. You're not going to have, as those pictures showed, what is marketable in cities down below that's here. And so what we have to do is to be realistic about what we want the community to become, but how we reach the goal. That's going to take input from all the players. Everyone who has an involvement, financially or otherwise, needs to be heard, needs an input, which is why, when I wrote a letter to the building industry, I said, please submit it in writing, so we can get it ahead of time, so we can view this. Now, Dr. Husing just finished this report. He doesn't have time to do it, and my understanding is that BIA did submit ahead of time to staff. Staff has now got to go through this. I would be looking for a report from staff, but if we're going to... There are some of these issues that we can move forward on really rapidly. Code enforcement, please. I mean, there are so many issues that's tied to this whole picture, that the city council could actually take an action to the next council agenda and do away with them, so that they don't keep coming up, and we don't have to hear about them over and over and over. It is nice that we got the neighborhood cleanup, but, you know, we have it. It doesn't need to be talked about again. It's to be taken care of. We have those programs. It's informational. It's good for us to know that we're going, but we don't need to talk about it again. Commercial land use restrictions, I'm not sure, except from all of the illegal signs. I haven't seen anything that affects them, that can be done real easy. Rental inspection program, we have agreed on that. Proactive residential code enforcement, we have agreed on that. Citizen reporting tool, we're going to skip it for a while, but we can narrow these down, I think, real easily and get on with it. And if there's going to be, the design guidelines, I think, is going to be very difficult. I think it's going to be very difficult to agree on. I think it's going to be very difficult to write it, and we're going to have to have input from the people who are responsible for doing it. Lot sizes, I think, is an issue somewhat. I'm not sure how big an issue it is. I'm not sure where people are coming from on it. It's something that we simply need to look at. It's, you know, it's not a big deal, and I think we need to take the time that we need to take. I don't want to rush into it and do it next week. I don't want to have to second the motion to put this off for a year either. But I said before, the worst thing this council can do is to let anyone make this a political issue for the November election, because if they do it and they try to do it, their motives aren't pure. I'm not going to listen to them.
Mr. Mayor, the problem I see, and I don't know that it was intended this way, but we have developments in this community that have become, in the long poll, high-volume, low-quality developments. And that's just what they are. I'm not sure that any of those developers intended that when they built them, but that's what they are today. They are extremely costly for us to provide service to. I'm not interested in rushing, but I'm also not interested in making our decisions based on the immediate DIF fees that are going to flow to this community, and the immediate jobs, and the immediate economic benefits of building a lot of houses, when in the long poll, we're going to have a tough, tough time servicing those. So I'm not for or against development. What I'm for is high-quality development. What I'm against is high-volume, low-quality development. And I think we've got all the evidence we need to know we got to avoid that. We've got to stay away from that. So our division, I think our decisions have to be driven down that path. And I think we can never ignore the long poll. Council's made development decisions 17 years ago that I wish they had looked at differently, because we're paying the price for them today. Not just this council, but the entire citizenry of Victorville. And I think we have to have that long poll view. We have to. I think we're not doing a service if we don't.
I agree. I think that, you know, it's pretty clear to me. We've got all the information. We've had all the presentations, and, you know, the building industry is just going to continue to drag this out, make it a political issue. And, I mean, they've already made statements of that, so, you know, let's just move forward. Let's just get it done. I think it should go back to planning.
I think at this time, we've been here since 5:00. We have a council meeting next Tuesday, Mr. Robinson.
No, that meeting has been canceled due to half the folks on the dais being in DC lobbying for additional funding.
Well, when is the next council meeting?
We have a special meeting planned to be called for May 13th. That's on the employee class and comp study. Then we have a meeting on the 20th, which is a regular city council meeting. I think it's the 20th. Correct me if I'm wrong, Carely. And then a week after that is either the budget, depending on if we can get through everything in that timeframe, or potentially a follow-up on the class and comp study.
Would it be acceptable, would it be possible, council, for council members to provide input to you for this next agenda? Put an item on there, on which one of these needs further discussion, which one we can resolve, how we're going to discuss them, whether they're going to be separate meetings or part of the council? I think it's going to be very difficult to try to include any of these in a regular council meeting, where we have other business. I think it's going to require special meetings. We're going to come into summer vacations very shortly. I'm not, I agree. I don't think we need to rush into it. We need to be careful, but if this isn't wrapped up within a reasonable period of time, I'm going to strongly recommend that we continue it for a year. I'm already hearing crap about the November election. This council doesn't deserve that. Citizens of this city doesn't deserve that. So we need to resolve all these issues that can be resolved. All of those that people want to play with for their own benefit need to put down the road. So there's no more business to come before the city council tonight. Provide input to you. We'll look for the council meeting at, when the next meeting is again?
The next regular meeting would be May 20th.
May 20th. Till then, thank everyone for participating and coming, and this meeting's adjourned.